I'll call our Pickens County Council meeting to order for October the first. Want to welcome everybody here. Thank you so much for taking the time to come and listen and participate and be a part of our county government. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Vice Chairman Chris Bowers for the invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Mr. Lord, in grace, in the Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come today and to meet and do the work of the county, Lord. We thank you for the many, many things that you bless us with and all of your graces we don't deserve, Lord. We pray now that you'll lead, guide, and direct us in the days to come and as we continue to do the work of this great county. We love you, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. We're now going to hold our public forum. This is the public's opportunity to give feedback to council on issues that you deem important. Madam Clerk, will you please call our first speaker?
Mr. Chairman and members of council, I call Jada Beckham.
I sent Megan some pictures of our neighbor in the Rolling Greens Estate subdivision. This subdivision is off of Essensstall Road, very nice subdivision. Neighbor and issue here, I would say is a hoarder. He's bringing trash from what looks like evicted apartments or homes. We're talking refrigerators, washing machines, mattresses, furniture, you name it. Pictures will tell you basically what kind of an issue we have. Contacted code enforcement, they've been out there, talked to him. Duke Energy, he's burning trash underneath a high-tension power line. I understand he cannot do that. Also, de-hay has contacted him twice. Duke Energy once, and I would say at least five or six times, code enforcement has been out there. I understand that code enforcement has given him a notice of 10-day cleanup. Now, he started the cleanup the day after he got the notice, but then he stopped. And that's the way he does. He goes only so far to pacify the code enforcement officers and then he leaves it as it is. And it's a horrible, horrible situation in a neighborhood where we all have pride of ownership and keep our yards and lots clean. And we're just after some enforcement here to have this man not do that anymore.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. The offer is.
Fred Black. Fred Black. Randy Bowers.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Randy Bowers. In my 30 years of living in Pickens County, I've stood here twice. And the last time I used very similar words to what we use tonight, but in a whole different context, how many emergency services in the profit sector? And the state of South Carolina authorizes de-hay to regulate and control the estate emergency services planes. And it uses the terms "public," "private," "paying," "volunteer" without hindrance of competition. Usually, I would say, y'all were doing this wrong, but that's not what I'm doing here. Over the last three weeks, in fact, I was cornered in church Sunday by Pickens County resident who owns property on the coast. And he said, "I stopped counting Pickens County trucks when I got to 25." I know that you folks want to honor some folks here tonight, but this is one time that I'm proud to be a Pickens County resident because I know that folks from Pickens County were responsible for traveling over 100,000 miles, moving a grand total of a little over 1,200 people and serving Ory County and other places with Swift Water Rescue, fire services, EMS services. And it has followed a lot of folks, like to find negative comments about whatever. The folks in Pickens County really stepped up. And I just wanted to come and say, thank you for letting the county employees go. And thanks to the guys that went with us. Thanks to the volunteer firemen, Swift Water guys. Thanks to the guys that went down there and served coffee. All of those things were extremely important. And when we had the fire on the mountain, folks came from everywhere to help us. It was a good time for us to return the favor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Conservatives of the upstates, over 300 members, are shocked with the recent hiring of the chairman's son for tourism director. The excuse your spokesperson gave on Facebook that Chairman Costner's son was the most qualified, that Chairman Costner recused himself from the vote, and that the lawyer checked with the South Carolina Ethics Commission and it was within the realm of being legal, is not good enough. Perception is everything. This nepotism has already created morale problems for other employees and can diminish the overall effectiveness of county government. It opens the door to family corruption in government. It is also our understanding Chairman Costner's son's fiance was hired in the finance department. And our new county clerk is her best friend. While conservatives of the upstate have no ill will toward any of these people, I'm sure they are qualified. However, this just doesn't look proper. COTU has been contacted by several county employees who are very uncomfortable with this nepotism. They wish to remain anonymous for fear of retribution, of loss of job, and have asked us to bring this issue to the light. There are more claims of nepotism, chromyism, favoritism that COTU has not yet vetted for truth, but we are trying to find out those details. COTU created a six-day poll on Facebook about perception of nepotism and if people think our county council should be okay with allowing this. The result after less than 30 hours is out of 190 responses, 90 percent say no. Most states recognize that nepotism is not best practice. It is widely confirmed that it is best to avoid hiring a family member, even if it means losing out on a more qualified person. Integrity is all about doing the right thing, even when there is a personal cost. Multiple family members making a living off the taxpayer dime really looks bad and smells worse. Public elected officials should avoid even an appearance of impropriety. All of you council members, our lawyer, our administrator, should be ashamed of yourselves for allowing nepotism to take place. You're losing taxpayers' trust. And during this particular time in our nation, when taxpayers are seeing news reports of corruption daily in government, this is an awful time to be engaging in nepotism. If you don't think there will be a huge influence from the chairman over his son as tourism director, and they will possibly be meeting behind closed doors discussing county business, you're living in lawlessness. As Governor Powell would say, shame, shame, shame. All of you need to be ashamed. Yeah, if you're all united with Neil Collins, you're united in doing the wrong thing, the wrong thing for a conservative county's reputation.
Thank you, Ms. Raines. Thank you, Ms. Raines.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, this is a place of public.
Thank you. We'll next head over to our administrator's report. Mr. Wilson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items for you to make. First off, I'd like to mention that as the administrator of Pickens County, my job is to hire the most qualified person for any position that we have open, and I will continue to do that. Second off, I'd like to take a moment to recognize a few of Pickens County's first responders. Last month, as you know, we had Hurricane Florence connect landfall, causing major damage in Northern South Carolina. Pickens County had 21 of our employees that actually deployed from this region. I'd like to ask Mr. Neese and Final Favor come up and recognize these employees.
I'm going to do a, we have a presentation going up on the screen showing some of the pictures. And we're just going to do a little presentation in regards to my guys. I'm going to start it out with, we are interviewed here today to recognize our pinnacle employees. They went to the coast to assist after Hurricane Florence devastated several areas. Our Swift Water team deployed before Florence impacted the coast, which allowed them to be ready once the storm hit. What a lot don't know is, we were told to go and then we were told not to go. And the team, that was like telling them they couldn't drink water. So it was very important that they were able to go and they did. I'm going to give a quick quote and then I'm going to turn it over to Mayor McMillan with Mullins, City of Mullins. Volunteers are not paid, not because they are worthless, but because they are priceless. So I'm going to let Mayor McMillan give a small presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, honored guests, and especially these fine, brave individuals who stand against the wall. I was told when I spoke to your administrator that he was really happy that I had decided to come. And there should be no surprise that I decided to come because any mayor, any public official worth his or her salt would jump at the chance to come and honor these gentlemen who we housed and became friends with over a period of several days. I don't think there's a force on earth, wind is a powerful, is a powerful force, fire certainly is a powerful force, but if you can see firsthand the ravages of destruction that take place behind a wall of fast-moving water, it will scare the bejesus out of you. And these fine gentlemen went out in the dead of night and moved approximately 150 of our citizens out of their homes in territory that was unfamiliar to them, in conditions that were uncertain, with the bravery that only God can give a man at any given moment. And I'm enormously proud to come here on behalf of the citizens of my town and thank them for their efforts. Not only did they come, this year they were with us two years ago. And it's not enough that I can do or enough that I can say to let them know how much the citizens of our town appreciate their efforts. Not only our town, but our county and surrounding areas because they touched a lot of lives, they touched a lot of hearts. And it should be us inviting them to be in our council chambers. And I've already told them, they skipped out on us. We decided to have a pretty big barbecue festival that we have every year. We were really concerned about the weather conditions and we actually postponed it, but we decided to go on and do it because it was the right thing to do for morale, it was the right thing to do for our citizens. And I had intended for these gentlemen to be a big part of it. But I want to tell you, when you wake up at 6:00, 7:00 in the morning and you've got 20 of the top barbecue cookers in the southeast, there's a smell that lulls over that town that is incomparable and incredible at the same time. And we thought that they would be there to be a part of it. But with the county's permission, and we've got a year to go, I would like to invite them now. And we'll find a way to get them there if we have to pay their expenses. But gentlemen, you have another invitation to be there next time and to be part of the tasting process. Not a lot more I can say other than this morning at 9:00, I signed a proclamation. This says in part that today, on the first day of October of 2018, in my official duties as mayor, I proclaim that today was Pickens County Swift Water Rescue Heroes Day. And the paperwork will follow, and I hope that you will find an appropriate place to hang it. Guys, you will never know what your impact and your bravery and your love of your fellow man did to our citizens and to me in particular. I hope that I can spend a little time with you before I leave, and I hope you all know, you can please call me friend anytime. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
As we recognize these folks in the next few minutes, I just want to give you a brief overview of what they've done. For 18 days, starting on September 12th through September 29th, these folks worked 3,672 man-hours. 21 people, 3,672 man-hours. A lot of these guys were working around the block several days in a row, you know, no sleep, very little sleep, sleeping on the cops, in rough conditions, no heat, no air, I mean, no hot water in a lot of cases. So please think about that, as these folks are recognized over the next few minutes. Our Swift Water Rescue Team, which was initially sent to Sumter, who ended up in Mullins, as the mayor was saying, over 150 folks were rescued. Four individuals were rescued from flooded waters out of a vehicle that was swept off the roadway. A lot of these rescues, you know, you hear the number, but you don't know every single scenario. Some of them from an apartment building, nursing home, residential home, you know, a lot of those things where flooded waters were a problem and they couldn't get out. But you take the Swift Water currents and the cars swept off of the roadway, a lot of these were putting these folks' lives in, you know, immediate danger. Our fire engine crew, thanks to Chief Elrod, Chief Reynolds, City of Central and City of Pickens teamed up together to send a fire engine with the crew on that, and they were able to embed themselves in Ory County, just like our EMS unit did. They embedded themselves in Ory County and they ran calls just like they should have. They were fed together, slept together, I mean, everything was embedded in Ory County. I was able to deploy in certain parts of this response and heard nothing but good things about Pickens County. They remembered us from past experiences and past training, and now these folks actually got to work again, and that's what it's all about. The last thing that, we had several people who couldn't be here tonight who went for communications. We've been training with the hard team, of course, our famous Pinnacle Mountain Fire several years ago. Lots of lessons learned off of these two things. And we were able to work with the National Guard, used the equipment that we purchased, you know, through lessons learned, Pinnacle Mountain, tie air-to-ground units together to make these rescues. Swift Water folks couldn't get somebody out, so they would call in an air asset to hoist that person out of a flooded area. So again, training and experiences that we've had in Pickens County were bagaged on Temerian County, Ory County, Dillon County, all these great places. So why can't they come up and call these folks out one by one? And council, I ask you to walk down the front, shake their hands as they come across, and Administrator, Chief Smith, Denise, everybody, we ask you to join in shaking these folks' hands, and then we're going to do a group picture when we're all finished. But again, please show me a thank to these Pinnacle, Pickens County Pinnacle persons.
Thank you, Mr. Roper. It's my honor to read these names into the record. And I don't know that it's everyone that's here, but please do. When your name's called, feel free to step forward and let us give you a measure of thanks back. Start with Mr. Jason Melton. Mr. Justin Thompson. Mr. Jeremy Arment. Clint Belcher. Shannon Dales. Kevin Finn Cannon. Robert Porter. Tim Rowland. Mike Staines. Eddie Talley. Pierce Womack. Matthew Littleton. Andy Childs. Alex Bowles. Ron Stoughton. Brandon Looper. Andrew Wilson. Alex Dalton. Richard Neese. Corey Lewis. And Dwayne Gobbins. Gentlemen, thank you.
I just want to say that our Pinnacle Awards are something that we created to really, celebrate those people in Pickens County who do something extraordinary. You guys have done that. So Mayor, thank you so much from you, the citizens. You guys, you honor these guys so well. We just wanted to put an exclamation point on it and make them the Pinnacle Award winners. So thanks to you guys, all that you all do, not only Pickens County, but people across the state beyond. We all appreciate it.
All right, and what's next? We're going to do a group of presentations. Listen, Gavin, chat Twitter.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for making sure and for everything that you said. We really, really do appreciate it. Thank you very much. It seems to owe council an apology. I was so excited about the Pinnacle Awards, I skipped right over the approval of our minutes from September 10th. So I ask for a motion approving the minutes September 10th, council meeting. Motion by Councilman Thiemster. Second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion other than what they're doing? All those that favor significant raising your hand? Motion carried. Onto our Committee of the Whole report. All right. The Committee of Whole met in the main conference room at the Administration Building on Monday, September 17th at 6:00. You've got a written report in your packet. The first item addressed was log number 104, Green Crescent Trail. There was no action taken on this. The next item was log number 103, Tour of the New Jail. And due to the Hurricane Florence's rain and the new jail being a little bit muddy, we postponed this log number to the next Committee of Whole meeting on October the 15th. The next item was log number 102, Accommodations Tax Recommendations for 2018, and the committee recommended moving this discussion to this council meeting. So at this time, you guys have got, let me pull out all my information here. You guys have got the, so I need a motion in a second to put the discussion on the table for the approval of the ATAX application as submitted by our committee. Motion by Councilman Thiemster. Second by Councilman Hudson. All right, now, discussion. My, and I will, in the essence of time, I'm hoping that we can go through this.
What is the committee's recommendation?
The committee recommendation was for us to move it.
No, 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 I'm talking about the committee.
Oh, the committee.
We had that last time. I'll see it here.
Mr. Roper, did we have additional information from the?
Yes, I provided you, and you should have received that.
I'm looking for the original one that they're, I know it was with our.
Oh.
Do we have the one that's kind of a long form? That'll have to be.
Yeah, I got that one. I'm just saying what they originally recommended.
All right. So, yeah, I think in the essence of time, so that we can move forward on each one of these, like to move, like to move forward these individually, although I'm going to do it this way or this way.
I think this is what they recommend, so this is what we're voting on, and then we can amend ahead, I think.
All right, so I'm going to go, I'm going to go from your sheet here. Forward that way, if you guys don't mind, because there's a little bit, do y'all have copies of this? You've got, you've got, you've got the spreadsheet in front of you? This was from the Committee of the Whole meeting. Okay, so the first item on the, I hope I've got all these here. First item from the, yeah, the overview recommended programs was General Andrew Pickens' grave site for $42,000, which is number 15 on here. They've had notes on here, coincides with 150 anniversary, maintenance repairs, long delay, hopes to attract more tourists, estimates 1,000 will visit, 100 of which will be tourists. Any discussion on this, recommendations moving forward? What do you, what do you guys want to do?
Mr. Chairman, I still stand with the opinion that was discussed in the committee meeting that I really, when we think about heads and beds, I don't see this, while it is a great need and it's something that needs to be done, I just, we've always looked at this as heads and beds, and I don't see this as being a head-and-bed type situation. And I'm hard-pressed to support 42,000 and go towards that for that reason.
Yeah, there's discussion, Council members.
I would agree with Councilman Bowers. Hope to attract more tourists. What I'm looking for, and I have been sorely disappointed from the beginning on this, is actual numbers as to how many beds, how many people you put in a hotel as opposed to what we think is going to be in a hotel, what we'd like to be in a hotel, and what, we pull a number out of thin air. And I haven't seen that with really any of these. But in this one in particular, 42,000, with the hopes that maybe 100. I think there are other ways to fund this that are more appropriate. This is not the one I think that needs to be funded this way.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Have you guys considered giving itself maybe not 42,000, but a lesser amount to attribute? One thing that the. the report, so if you wanna make an amendment?
Right, we have to make.
You have to take a motion.
I make the motion to amend to remove the 42,000 for the Andrew Pickens' gravesite.
A motion for removing the 42,000, is there a second? Second by Councilman Whiters, any discussion on that?
I'd like to see a smaller, at least a smaller amount, uh, being used there, because that is a historic site.
You know, uh, if it doesn't meet the requirements, if that's what we're saying, it doesn't meet the requirements, I don't know that, that doing a smaller amount would be appropriate. If it doesn't meet the requirements, another section it doesn't meet, if that's what we're saying, so I think probably we vote on whether it meets it.
But do we know that for a fact? Do people come from far off to see that? Do we know that?
They don't know that at all.
And we don't, and we don't have any information?
There's no documentation.
They say they hope to attract, they say they wanna hope to attract tourists. What we're looking for here is that we, we've got money from hotels, and it's an ATAX, and that money comes to be, and we are tasked by state law to spend that to create more rooms in hotels, that's how we create tourism, is to do things that get more people to spend nights in hotels. And one of the things that I've, on several years, have been hawking about this, is that we give money to groups just to give money to groups, and what I wanna see is, show me where you put people in hotel rooms. In this particular case, they want 42,000, and they're saying, we hope to attract more tourists. Maybe they'll, they're saying they estimate 1,000, well, they just pull that out of the air, an estimate 100 in, in hotels. Uh, I'm, I've been to this church many times, this gravesite, my dad's buried out there, I've never seen tourists there. I've been to Pickens' gravesite himself, it does need work. I don't know that I could justify $42,000 worth of work, but, but what the point is, is, is like Mr. Hudson says, does this meet the criteria that we are bound by to, to, to give this money out by? Just 'cause we want to, doesn't mean we can.
I believe, based on the information we have, that, I believe that it does not, but, is there any other discussion before I call for a vote? The motion is to remove the amount. No, it's any other discussion?
Uh, I thought to abstain because I have a family member buried there.
All right.
In Pickens' gravesite?
Not his part of it. I do have a plot there and have a child there.
Well, I, I as well have family members there. Um, I don't think that abstains from voting on the Pickens County about, about the, uh...
We understand that we do.
If, any other discussion? All those in favor of removing the 42,000, signal raising your hand. And that motion carries. So we'll take that out. The next item that I had on here is a Senior League World Series, uh, recommendation, uh, they requested 25,000, uh, recommendation from the committee was 15,000, uh, it says 5,000 tourists, 800 room nights generated per application, they also do printing and advertising, uh, demonstrates a significant hotel room impact fund at le, at last year's levels.
Have, have they been able to demonstrate that? Because I know for a period of time, all the kids were actually staying in Swoop.
Yeah, but their parents had come with them in the droves, or staying somewhere, and they're not staying on campus, so.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, if I could, um, if you remember, we went from big league to senior league, and one thing that has been noted in the last two years with senior league, is it is a younger, um, athlete. Um, with that younger athlete, we're actually, in the last two years, have seen more family and, um, um, friend involvement, if you will, from all over the, the world, literally all over the world. I think there was only one team that didn't have every child represented in some way, shape, or form. The athletes are staying at Clemson University, um, that, that's something that's gone with the last several years, but as far as the hotel rooms, they literally are booking anywhere and everywhere they can, from, um, easily across to Clemson, um, I imagine, Powderville and, um, Seneca as well, purely because there aren't enough rooms for every athlete's family and friends, but, um, just from personal, I have seen that over the last two years with the senior league rebranding.
Uh, this is a question for our attorney. My understanding, the, uh, we say heads and beds, and, uh, that is what they're gonna do, but, uh, it's 50 miles, is that not right?
The, Mr. Hudson, the 50 mile rule is kind of a rule of thumb that the Department of Revenue, I mean, the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism uses to define a tourist. And a tourist, uh, under state law, the strict reading of that is someone who's engaged in the actions and activities of people taking trips outside their home communities for any purpose except daily commuting to and from work. That definition doesn't really help you much, uh, but that's the legal state law definition. So what this council has done in the past, and Mr. Whiters has a right to reference this, is this council has said, we need to see some demonstration of, of heads and beds, but that's this council's requirements, this, the state law requirement uses the 50 mile rule of thumb and the definition of tourist. So it's really, what I would say at the end of the day, it's what, what convinces you gentlemen, is what would be binding here.
To me, the World Series is a no brainer. I agree with what they do. I've been down in person, I've seen it. It's a lot of exposure to our county and to the easily community. It is also broadcast nationally on ESPN Network, worldwide on the ESPN app, so I think it's a wise investment for us.
I did have a question. Did they give justification for the 15 versus 25, just out of curiosity?
Yeah, Mr. Bowers, at that time, keep in mind that the committee was dealing with what they thought was about $104,000, so they had more than, almost double that in requests, so they were trying to prioritize it within that amount. As we've learned since, the amount that's actually available is more like 139,000, so there is more flexibility now than there was.
Do we know how much we gave them last year?
They gave them $15,000 last year.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we fund the senior league at the 25,000 that they requested.
I would second that.
Is the motion a second on the 25,000? Is any other discussion?
Um, I don't think in terms of adding money to stuff. We funded, we funded them at 15,000 last year.
Yes, sir.
Did they, they requested 25, did they request 25 last year? Do we know?
I don't know how much they requested last year.
I think they did. If my memory serves correct.
We're looking at, at $25,000 in printing and advertising. That's a lot of money for print.
And advertising.
And advertising.
That's worldwide advertising.
Wow.
I mean, I'm, I'm not joking, it, it is worldwide advertising. Boarding Councilman Henry.
It is worldwide.
ESPN has seen around the world.
Well, these teams come from around the world.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion is presented to increase that to 25,000, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed?
I can't see it yet.
All right. That motion carries. So that's, I'm keeping, I'm keeping a tab here. Uh, the next, uh, the Christmas festival at Hagan Mill, um, which is number one. Um, it's a new concept, new event idea, estimates, estimates only at this point because they haven't done it yet, application set 25,000 person attendance goal with 40% being tourists.
Is this a one-day event?
This is not a one-day event. This is a 12-day event, is that correct?
So over the course of seven days.
Seven days?
Yeah, over the course of two weeks, Mr. Chairman.
And the request was for 50, and it was funded at 10. I mean, I, the, all right, so I, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, move that up to 25,000, um, only because it's Hagan Mill, we haven't, we haven't done a whole lot to, to, to help that, this would give them a shot in the arm for this event, is, I mean, and, and get it, get it started. Uh, hopefully we'll get everybody in the Christmas season. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Feenster, any discussion?
I, I don't agree, you just going out another 25 grand, you know?
Well, I mean, they, they recommended 10, I was going up by 15, because it looked like they needed 50.
Well, they asked for 50.
Right.
And so the committee, what did they justify it as?
10.
For a first-time event that we have no track record with.
And I think the event, please understand, I, I agree with the idea of the event, and I understand they need the money for the event, but when I'm looking at how an additional 15,000 is gonna help bring tourists in, I think that's where my question lies, I mean, it's not a tried and true, it is a new event, it does need help, I agree with that 100%, but I kind of, I think, Councilman Whiters will suffer on that page here.
Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for, uh, another amount, or?
I just don't know, I really don't.
I think for a new event, $10,000 is generous.
Leave it this time and if it...
So you've got, you've got a motion?
You still got, you got a motion out there now.
You want to admit?
Mr. Chairman, the 10,000 is a recommendation made by the committee, so we require an emotion for its statement.
You can withdraw your motion if you want.
Then, uh, seeing as the, you guys are talking about, I'll withdraw the motion. All right, so...
Second's gotta withdraw too.
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. Um, so, uh, just vote on the approval on the, the 10,000?
You can just go to the next.
We can go to the next one, all right. Uh, the next one that I had is the Central Railroad Festival, recommended 3,000, which is, why can't I find it? Why can't I find it? Oh, there's, it's kinda central, number two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
5,000 in attendance last year, of which 20% were tourists based on survey at the event, they do advertising, it says, continues to grow, and they wanted to fully fund their amount.
So that's 1,000 people coming.
That are 20, yeah, 1,000 people.
And at least they're serving, and it seems to be they're, they're actually trying to serve, and I was there, and they do ask if you're out of town.
Okay, uh...
Make the motion before they land it.
We don't even have to do that, if there's no other, no other motions, we're gonna move on to the next one, yeah. I'm, I'm figuring that out, what we need to do here, okay. Um, next is Upstate Heritage Quilt Trail, which was 4,150, they voted to fully fund that, um, request is for signage and advertising of exil, existing quilt patterns located in Pickens County, um, they provide 483 as the number of tourists attracted to the program.
Do you, did they say how they came up with 483?
We have registration numbers for that with the quilts.
I have seen them, I do know that people come and, and, and look at them, I don't know about where they, if they stay here or not.
Is it a one-day event?
No, no, it's up all the time. It's a trail, they, they painted this quilt.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I will say, you know, my, my, I'm not gonna give you opinion, I'm gonna give you a fact, the Upstate Heritage Quilt Trail papers us with documentation, they sent something as late as August 30th as an update on how they're doing and how they're spending our money, so in terms of them actually complying with council's directive, I would say they're the example.
Is there any, uh, any other conversations about that? All right, we'll move on with that. Um, the next thing I have is the, oh, my goodness, I got, Salugid, the Native American Celebration, $6,000, um, at, uh, this item number five, Hagan Mill. They said to fund at last year's amount, 4,000 in attendance, of which 30% were tourists. They had requested 10,000, and their recommendation was six. Any discussions? All right, we'll move on. Now, we've already done the Senior League, right? Okay, and, uh, the Winter Bluegrass Jubilee, or for the Possum Organization, um, continuing, they voted to continue to the funding at the prior event level, uh, radio station print media marketing campaign to promote event, 1,000 attendees last year, 300 estimated to be tourists.
What is?
The, it's a, it's a, a day and a half event, really, and it's, it is the fundraiser for the preserving, the, uh, yams, preserving our Southern Appalachian music, um, they, um, there are about 300 kids that participate in the program.
They're young, so they bring parents with them, grandparents with them, they travel well, and they attract people.
And they're bringing in, they bring in, uh, multiple groups from, throughout the entire southeast, so I know that, uh, when I attended, there was a band from North Carolina, from Georgia, from, uh, Tennessee, um, so it's an all-day thing on, yeah, on Saturday. Any discussion on this? All right, we'll move forward. Um, uh, the next, and I'm gonna come back to these other ones, uh, the next I had is the Clemson Music Festival, item number 12.
What about the TNS?
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm, uh, I'm going by the original sheets on, it'll, we'll get to it. So the Clemson Music Festival, event is growing in venues throughout the, the county, um, funding is to offset promotion expenses, estimate 700 to 800 tourists with 100 to 110 room nights generated, $2,500 was the request, and was what was granted.
That, that, that is growing event.
All right. Um, next is a Visit Clemson.
This is the Clemson Chamber of Commerce.
The Clemson, the Clemson Chamber of Commerce, um, $5,000, they, they requested 25,000.
Yeah.
Um, Clemson adds high magazines, uh...
This is promoting the rowing program, which they do every spring, um, I think they had like, I wanna say, 4,000 rooms last year. It's probably, if you look at the return on investment of getting ATAX, nothing we do compares to what they...
He came and spoke at, uh, I remember last year, um...
Rowing, it's a lot.
It's a big, it's a big program.
And they come from all over, and they come, and they stay, these whole teams of people stay for a week at a time, uh, and they're from Vermont, wherever it's frozen, they come down here.
Do you have a recommendation?
I would like to give them some more money to work with, they've asked for 25,000, I'd like to give them like 15,000.
Is that your motion?
May I make that?
I'll second. Okay, Mr. Feenster, you can second that one, that's fine.
Motion to increase this to 15,000, uh, seconded by, um, Councilman Feenster, uh, any discussion on that? Yes, sir, Mr.?
I'm waiting on that.
Oh. All those in favor, signify raising your hand. Motion carries. All right, uh, next is the Pickens Azalea Festival, uh, which was number 14.
I would like to make a motion that we fully fund the Pickens Azalea Festival, I've seen it for a number of years, they attract...
Five thousand dollars. They, they requested twenty-five thousand. Um, Clemson adds high magazines, uh...
This is promoting the rowing program, which they do every spring. I think they had like, I wanna say four thousand rooms last year. It's probably, if you look at the return on investment of getting ATAX, nothing we do compares to what they...
He came and spoke at, uh, I remember last year.
Rowing, it's a lot.
It's a big, it's a big program.
And they come from all over and they come and they stay, these whole teams of people stay for a week at a time. Uh, and they're from Vermont, wherever it's frozen, they come down here.
Do you have the recommendation?
I would like to give them some more money to work with. They've asked for twenty-five thousand. I'd like to give them like fifteen thousand.
Is that your motion?
May I make that?
I'll second. Okay, Mr. Feenster, you can second that one, that's fine.
Motion to increase this to fifteen thousand, uh, seconded by, um, Councilman Feenster. Any discussion on that? Yes, sir, Mr.?
I'm waiting on those.
Oh. Those in favor signify raising your hand. Motion carries. Alright, uh, next is the Pickens Azalea Festival, which was number fourteen.
I would like to make a motion that we fully fund the Pickens Azalea Festival. I've seen it for a number of years. They attract bukus of people. I mean, twenty thousand, that's a lot. I mean, a lot of people all day long. The vendors are from all over the state, tri-state area. And you have all these other people coming into town. Don't tell, talk to the people. There's no telling how many towns they're actually coming from because there are a bunch that do not live here that come in from that. As you hear all these people, oh, bring us somewhere, I saw somewhere, and so I would like to make a motion that we fully fund it to eight thousand instead of five.
When you look at a cost, oh, I'm sorry, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hudson. Uh, I was gonna say, when you look at the cost per tourist, when they attract twenty thousand tourists, again, where'd the number come from? I know.
That's, you know, it, what it, would be nice to know, how many rooms do we have available in Pickens County? That's a, that's a finite number.
Three.
Right?
It's more than three.
It's more than three.
But, you know, it would be, it doesn't seem like it'd be hard to get a survey from hotel owners to say on this weekend, how booked were you?
But you, you've also gotta take into consideration, um, of, uh, Airbnbs and all that kind of stuff.
I know, definitely, all, I mean, all of them. That's all the rooms. I mean, I don't, yeah.
Actually, could, I don't, is this an appropriate place to, uh, ask for staff to get us that information going forward? We, I would love to know that too. Thank you, sir.
This is something I think that they can, these people requesting the money ought to be doing a little homework to justify their request and say, yeah, here's, or, or do a survey. We can show you. We got people signed up from all these different places and say, there's twenty thousand tourists. Well, we had a sign-in book or people, like they're doing in Central, they're asking people where you're coming from. And then we can say when they make their application. Look at the people from Virginia to Florida showed up and hear their names. I think that makes it easier for us to put money towards it.
And tons of people rent out their house on football weekends.
You're right.
And, uh, probably other special event times.
Clemson University's not asking us for any of that.
He's talking about...
Alright. Motion in the second to, to increase this to eight thousand dollars, which is what was requested, is any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Alright, uh... I've got the Clemson African American Museum. They had requested five thousand. They, uh, voted to fully fund that. It's an outreach program to build tourism at the museum. Funds will go to New Brochures Conference speakers, thirteen hundred anticipated in attendance with five hundred being, uh, tourists.
Is this an event they're doing? So they're just trying to promote?
It's, I think it's a combination of events and, um, advertising.
And they have increased the size of their area of the museum, so I'm sure they want to just spend some money to, uh, populate the rest of the museum space they have.
Any other discussion? Alright, we'll move forward. Pickensville Farm Days requested a thousand, uh, longtime program for good for tourism. They gave them a thousand. Uh, they do advertising buys for the tri-county area. Attendance was forty-five hundred plus and at least three hundred and twenty of those met the definition of tourist.
Better ratio than some others.
Well, I think that's kind of low. They had never applied before and this was a new thing for them. It always, but, but that's what they apply for.
So, you think they should get a different amount, Councilman Hudson?
Well, um, they advertise, um, in the tri-state area. So they're pulling people out of Tennessee and North Carolina and Georgia, a couple, uh, some from Florida. So they are pulling a lot of people. They, they did start a, and I don't know how this is gonna come out, but I can tell you these three hundred and twenty, uh, definition of tourist is very low because all that is, is their vendors and their exhibitors. They hadn't even polled the people that's coming there, the people that's buying tickets there and coming into the area. So they did that this year and they're supposed to have those numbers to us this, this month. But I suspect it's gonna be pretty high.
Do you wanna make a, a motion or do you wanna keep it the same?
Well, I would like to see them get about twenty-five hundred for advertising because a thousand dollars is just not much on the advertising.
Motion for twenty-five, so an additional fifteen hundred. Second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Alright, I'm doing math again. Uh, now to the last one that they funded, the Pickens Rotary Ride to the Rock, which was item number ten. It's an event in early years. Funds are requested for advertising, printing event flyers. Thirty-three tourists participated in the ride.
This is a ride up that these people are spending night anywhere, are they?
Well, that people come from far off or out of, out of area to ride.
There's only thirty-three of them, they're even claiming.
They're guesstimating.
And they're guesstimating that. I mean, I know it's only seven fifty bucks.
If I could, they're not, that's not a guesstimate, that's the bike registration people.
Okay.
But they have crew members.
From out of state, from out of town and out of state.
Are they out of state or?
Yeah, they have people, it's not my cup of tea, but they have people come out here, ride the bike up the mountain, so.
I think seven fifty, it meets the requirements.
It'll cost the tourists.
It's actually not, it's not bad. We've got a lot worse to add.
Alright, so no other, we're good with moving forward on that. Alright, now on to these other items. Item number three was Discovery Up Country Carolina. Greenville-based regional-focused advertising buy, it's an advertising buy for the upstate region, estimate sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight room nights in Pickens County. Mr. Opper, do you know anything else about this? I know, flag. It's called a flag.
Where's my yellow flag?
All I can really say is the committee acted much the same way.
Okay.
This isn't the Lake Hartwell Country Advertisement Organization, right? It's the Pickens Anderson, that's what I mean.
This is Greenville, want to soak more money out of it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not Pickens, it's only Anderson, it's regional.
Do we have sixty-eight thousand room nights?
I mean...
Well, he's really nice.
Must be across the upstate.
Okay. Okay, so we're good with leaving that as it is? Alright, the next one was the, uh, Easely Gymnastics. Funds requested for promotion of southeastern gymnastic event, estimate six hundred room nights.
And this, this was one that, um, I believe I spoke about in the committee and probably questioned, does it have to be a not-for-profit, blah, blah, blah? Because they have a proven track record from two years ago or three years ago where they did this and brought in the room nights. Um, I've done a little independent on my own, asking questions. I would like to make a motion that we fund their five thousand dollars for this, uh, southeastern gymnast, gymnastics meet.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman Hudson seconds. Any other discussion?
What have you, what have you been researching on? Tell me what you've...
Well, number one, the legitimacy of the, the meet and the legitimacy of what it is, the qualifying, blah, 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 to get to the next level. You'll have folks come in and do nothing but, um, get what they call floor score. So they're not actually competing per se in the full meet. They just come in and do a, a, a section. Very few people actually do that, but it's a way to bump up. I've learned a lot about gymnastics in the last two weeks. Bump up your level to be able to go to the next level. Most of the individuals actually have to come in. They're not at, uh, they don't have the honor, leisure, whatever to, to bump up. They actually are trying to qualify to get to the next level. And I don't know where the next level is from this, so you will have people from all over the Southeast, literally the Southeast, coming to compete, so.
How long is the event?
Uh, it was a weekend event, if I'm not mistaken.
And what ages?
I think it's three days, four days.
What ages are the participants?
I don't remember right off, Mr. Feenster, I'm sorry. Um, I know that they start as little as preschool and they go to college, so I don't know. I imagine this is all encompassing.
Well, if they got six hundred room nights...
And these are numbers that they...
For five, for five thousand, that's what they feel, you feel comfortable what they're telling you now?
I really do, yeah.
So there's a motion in the second for, uh, increasing that to five thousand. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Next was the T Ed Garrison Arena. I'm gonna do my math again, hold on. Okay. The capital request for a venue that's in Anderson County. Request is fund two motorized roll-up doors facility. They chose not to fund that.
I agree with that.
I hear you have the discussion, so we'll move forward on that. Uh, next is Holly Springs, item number eleven. Uh, the request was for seven thousand dollars. Uh, Holly Springs is, uh, a school for the mountain arts, which geared to school-age field trip children. Future plans include projections of a hundred estimated tourists camping on-site or nearby. Uh, I know this is, uh, Holly Springs is something that we funded to help start. I guess it was, was it last year?
Yeah.
That's when the famous quote says, you want your chickens to grow, you gotta give them a good feed.
So is there, um, any recommendations or discussion here?
I would like to make a motion that we fund four thousand dollars at that, seven thou, requested seven thousand dollars.
There's a motion for four thousand, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman, uh, Bowers. A discussion on that?
Alright, I've got some data from them. And what was in here is not, they did a craft fair, Artisan Gallery, and, uh, what's the other one? Holiday Craft Fair, a different one, Holiday Craft Fair, within those things. And, um, one thing, in this organization, this thing is in its infancy, this genre. And they're starting to grow. And they offer, one thing they do do up there in Holly Springs, they offer these courses where people sign up and take these classes. Building mountain arts, I did one with bicycle repair up there. And people do these different classes. They do wood, uh, wood carbon for bowls and all kinds of things, quilting and things like that. They do all these things. Then the Artisan Gallery and the stuff, they have people coming from out of town. But, uh, one thing, just one event that they disclosed some data on it, had about three hundred students, four hundred of those students. Uh, they estimated five percent according to the records, twenty being out of town, that's on that. And then, um, that is about seventy-eight that did not have zip codes on where they were from, so they couldn't track that one. Those seventy-eight. But they have these things and again, one thing I'd like for you guys to, uh, consider is duty or, uh, voting to support this because, uh, it's only gonna grow. And it's our opportunity to help them with that and we will see dividends on that. The other thing, they had, uh, on the craft fair, they had forty being from out of town. And, um, had thirteen visitors from out of town, or vendors rather, not visitors, forty visitors, thirteen vendors from, uh, out of town for that, one, this different craft fair here they had. So they're starting to grow their numbers and they're starting, I think next year, after talking to them, you know, they were able to backtrack and get this data based on the records they did have. But, and I talked to them about what is required for ATAX to qualify for that. And I think next year, the data, hopefully along with all these other organizations, we'll see a lot better data on this. But they were able to definitely track down this data here as something that is documented from being out of town, right here. So if you guys would consider doing four thousand dollars for this program, it would greatly appreciate it.
There's a motion in the second to make that four thousand dollars. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm sorry, to, to be pure of what we're doing, even in their application, this is geared towards school-age field trip, school-age children for field trips. Their future plans include projections of a hundred estimated tourists. Now, you're telling me other stuff because I've had some people come into this craft show or that craft show. If they can demonstrate that next year and say, listen, we are working towards bringing in overnight tourists, but it seems to me that their programs up to this point hasn't been geared towards that and that's not the way they put in their request for that. And maybe next year, I would entertain the idea when it more closely fits what we're looking for. I think we have to try to stay as close to what is pure and what we're doing as best way we can. And, um, based on their application of what they're saying, they estimate future plans of a hundred tourists. That's not even what we have.
Well, that's all anybody's do is estimate because there's nobody that has a crystal ball going into the future to say, this is what we will do. Because nobody knows what...
But they're not talking about this year. They're not saying we're projecting this many tourists. They're hoping some, some point in the future. They're not even talking about right now. All these other people here are saying, right now, we're gonna have this many people here. The only one we don't really know is the brand new program, which was the Hagan Mill. But they've got application sets for twenty-five thousand per persons. So I can't, I can't consistently vote for this and vote for everything else and, and, and to fit in what our model is. Now, next year, I'm happy to entertain it, but...
I, I, I understand what you're saying. I see exactly where you're coming from and I'm kind of right there on the fence. I guess the way I'm looking at it is a little different. I'm looking not as much as heads in beds as I am the definition of tourism. And, um, you know, while what they're wanting to do is not heads in beds, it is tourism that will get them to heads in beds, I guess is the way. And that may be a stretch, but that's the way I'm looking at this four thousand, is that while it's not heads in beds this year, it's still tourism. And whether it be your, your, your people coming in doing the education, whether it be the school-age kids coming from other parts of the state that they're, that they're going for, even North Carolina and Georgia, would lead to the heads in beds in the future, but still meets the definition of tourism this year. And that's the way I, I kinda see it. But I understand exactly where you're at, Councilman Waters.
Yeah, but you're right, boy, that definition, Councilman Bowers.
Well, before I...
The person's beyond picky miles and they do qualify that way.
Before I call for the vote, the, um, the only thing I would say is, this is a definition of the chicken and egg problem. It, it, for anybody new coming on board when they're trying to start out, it's, it's difficult to get started and prove that you can do something unless you've got a vision and a plan to do it. I do believe that they stepped up with the, um, beginning their programs, you know? My, my hope is that this program, we've actually got the kids from the lower part of the state coming to the upper part of the state. But again, they're not, I understand exactly what you're saying and I understand what you're saying. Any other discussion, Councilman Feenster?
Yeah, I was gonna mention, uh, the camping. You talk about camping on-site or nearby. And I'm wondering, uh, what kind of money that brings in to the county.
If, if, is it Mall Creek or?
Temple Rock.
Well, I'm talking about, I'm talking about, yeah, around Holly Springs. Apparently, they say that some people are spending the night up there and, uh, so...
Which you have, Hever Rock State Park, very close. You have Kiwi Tuxedo Way, State Park, very close. So those offer camping tent and camper. And I will say this, as an educator in the South Carolina school system here in Pickens County, and also as a parent of two kids, there's a lot of stuff coming up and they're both in college. I would say this, anytime you have a school-aged child traveling, not far behind, you will have a parent, grandparent or relative tagging along with them. That is beyond a shadow of a doubt. You will see that every time you have a child traveling, whether it be for easily gymnastics, uh, school mountain arts, any of those things. You will have children being followed by parents traveling and they do spend dollars on hotels and meals. And, uh, I've seen that firsthand.
Any other discussion? We'll call for the vote then. All those in favor of, uh, moving this to four thousand dollars for Holly Springs Center, please signify by raising your hand. Oppose? The motion carries. Alright, uh, we've got one more item, uh, which is the Upstate Center for the Arts, requested twenty-five hundred dollars. New request, no demonstration of attracting overnight tourists, the, uh, are in the notes here. Proposal is for making it a weekend for an adult art camp, estimates thirty room nights. Do we have any other information other than that?
They, they, they're an ongoing entity. They do offer art classes. It's been more community-focused. And they've had a few people come from outside the community to participate in the art classes. So their idea is they want to try to market that and try to attract people to come in and stay for a weekend and then take the art class.
Where are they located?
In Clemson.
Sounds like Holly Springs for adults.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean it either.
Alright, any recommendations, discussions on this? All right, any recommendations, discussions on this? All right, then we will move forward. If my math is correct, that.
Are they going to make it a requirement? Do we know if they're going to make it a requirement that you spend the night in a hotel room to be a part of this camp? I mean, I can see that, because some organizations require you to book a hotel room and it's as a giveaway, as part of the deal, which would be an automatic, if they're going to enroll 30 couples, that's 30 bed nights. If it's just a Friday night or Saturday night, that's a given, that one's easy, if we know that that's what they're going to do. If they're not, then new point.
They didn't have any type of requirement like that in the application material.
It'd be nice if some of these people put that together for us, information. We've got so much sketchy information and all this stuff.
Well, yeah, I'll say something at the end, I think.
You can blow over the bar, but that's okay. There we are.
Well, we actually haven't lowered the bar, we've raised the bar, but they're not, we're not there yet. Our expectations are better than they were, we're just not.
But as long as we keep handing it out.
We've got to get to, we've got to get to a different level.
I can say, Mr. Chairman, not to take up time, but I did reach out, as y'all instructed, to other counties to find that information. And in terms of us raising the bar, I think what you're requiring now is above what others are requiring, and I don't mean that in a bad way, I mean that in a good way. Four counties responded to my request, and they're all just getting the spreadsheet and voting.
What if we, with this next year's application, if we sit out and really become more detailed in what we're going to require to consider this? You're going to have to show us some numbers.
Right, I think that we did actually try that in the last, in this funding cycle. And so one thing that we, I've talked about with the administrator, and he has endorsed the idea of, is we're going to send additional information with the check this year, saying, you're going to, you're receiving this money, report back to us very quickly on how you spent it and how many, how you used it to attract tourism. Set the expectation with the check this time, and see if that helps y'all get some of the information.
And that's going to determine on what happens next year.
Yes, sir.
You'll have to check my math to make sure that I've done this correct.
$2,900.
I have $91,900.
You're okay, because you're under that.
Yeah, we're under, we're under what they did from before. So, okay, at this point, we go back to our original motion on the remainder of those that we didn't make any motions or adjustments to. There was a motion in the second on those items. Is there any other discussion on that? Seeing none?
What I would say is, thanks to the committee for the work they did and putting all this together.
Absolutely, we really taxed them a good bit to come back with more and more information. And I think, as you can hear from all the council, we really are going to look real hard at where we're spending our dollars to get a return on investment based on getting the people to come visit Pickens County. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. And that motion carries. That was riveting. All right, so that concludes my committee of the whole report. Council correspondence, I've got a couple of things to mention before you guys do, just in case. Let's see, the committee of the whole will meet on Monday, October the 15th, at 6:00 in the main conference room. Next council meeting will be Monday, November the 5th, at 6:30 in the auditorium of this facility. A little bit about our Sesquicentennial Celebration coming up, October 5th and 6th, the Time Capsule opening at 2:00 at the Pickens County Courthouse, they dug it up today, and it's bigger than they thought. So really cool experience, I invite anybody to watch. I guess, hopefully they'll be, they videoed everything. I know that Mr. Hendricks was the color commentator.
I was playing Geraldo.
Yeah. So, let's see, Time Capsule opening will be at 2:00, and that's at the county courthouse. We're expecting the governor there, as well as other leaders in the community. So we're excited about that, but, you know, not to, not, that's not the only time people will get to see it, because it'll also be a part of the Blue River Birthday Bash on October the 6th. That event is going to kick off with the United Christian Ministry's Feet for Heat 5K Run, and then the opening ceremony is at 11:00 AM, followed by all kind of musicians, performances, carnival rides, bake-offs. There will be a barbecue cook-off, the beard contest, you can't enter. Yeah, that's all of us, there's not a mustache contest, sorry. Feenster, and sorry. The, then the Swing and the Dying Time Capsule presentation. I know that the state delegation has a presentation for all of us. And then it concludes with Pickens County's Got Talent and a firework show, so it should be a big deal there. Our Litter Blitz on September 21st, we had more than 300 employees who participated, as well as several municipalities. I mean, it was, it's always amazing to see the level of participation at this event. And the one thing that we talked about in our group was, while you pick up four straws, you pick up 1,000 cigarette butts. So I'm not sure about the plastic thing on straws now, but I am sure about the cigarette butts. But we picked up 22,640 pounds of trash, which was, is amazing, it's actually less than we did the first time. So that just means that we've got people that are, they're taking part of the Five on Friday and continuing to clean up our county. So thank you to everybody who participated, thank you to all of the staff, I know that Lisa kind of headed that up. Please, I know she's not here right now, but please, on behalf of council, tell her how much we appreciate all of her hard work. Is there any other correspondence that needs to be announced? Oh, shoot, I got one more thing. First responder Appreciation Day is going to be at Popefield Park on October the 19th, from 5:00 to 7:00. Smoking Blues BBQ, a bouncy castle and slide, cornhole giveaways, kickball tournament. It's, they're looking for people to let them know they're coming by October the 12th. For more details, I guess they go to the county website. Now, is there any other correspondence? All right, we'll move on to our next item, item number seven, motion period of new business. Do we have any new business? All right, seeing none, move on to item number eight. This is consideration to approve disbursement of District 4 Recreation Funds in the amount of $41,148. This is the amount that was originally approved by our council when we first started this out early, I guess in spring. There had been several meetings with the Recreation Committee and the City of Liberty. They are working on a proposal to help offset the cost for some additional funding, but our motion tonight is for the recreation funds for $41,148. So I ask for a motion, I'll put to force the motion, I ask for a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hendricks. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Onto item number nine, the second reading of ordinance for a multi-county park with Oakoni County. I'm informed by the staff that the attorneys have not concluded their work, that's sufficient for a second reading, so I ask for unanimous consent that this item be deferred until a later date. All right, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All right. Onto item number 10. Consideration of resolution authorizing payment of one-time grant to the Pickens County Water Authority per the authority's request to study present and future water issues within Pickens County. I ask for motion in the second to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Hendricks, second by Councilman Feenster, any discussion?
You want to explain what this?
I was going to say.
What then? You meant to explain.
Yeah, go ahead. I mean.
There's a little history behind this. This is a grant to do a water study with Lake Kiwi for Pickens County to look at the possibility of getting water for themselves. Right now, there's a pipe that comes out of Lake Kiwi that goes to Greenville, in which we purchase water back from Greenville. If I get off with this, you let me know, I'm on track.
Yeah.
Because you know as much as I do about this.
That's what I was going to say.
I've been going to some of the meetings, and you're very accurate.
Well, we went through a very big debate with Duke Energy when they were re-upping their FERC application. This right tried to be taken away from us several times. We fought toe-to-toe, and I don't know if y'all remember, but it was ugly. We have that right, we kept the right, and now what we're doing is engaging the first step. I anticipate a lot of pushback and Greenville water on this, because they're making money off of our water, and it's our water. And we need to be able to have access to it for our own people.
And I think something else for generations to come.
This is a 30, 40-year down, we may make the process earlier, but this is where we're looking, is much further down the road in securing these water rights.
And this is just for the study?
This is just for the study.
Right.
And just for the record, we discussed this in great detail, and this involves all, pretty much all of the water, companies, if you will, in the county, ultimately at some point in time, and the water authority is its own entity, so it's not, it doesn't answer to us, it is its own entity. The only hesitation I have, obviously, is we're funding another entity's project, but when you look at the importance of the project, I believe that it has been expressed, while they're not our group, it is in the best interest of the county. And that, I think, that's where I'm going to be at on it, is the fact that it's at the best interest of the county to look into this.
It benefits every citizen living in the county, in one way or another. And this area is really growing, the university is growing very rapidly now, and we're seeing that with extra traffic and all that, so I'm sure that we're going to need that water sooner or later.
No, absolutely, we need the water like now. Decades ago, when they originally agreed to send it to Greenville without, right, for free. All right, so we have a consideration of a resolution authorizing payment of a one-time grant to the Pickens County Water Authority. The motion in second, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Item number 11 is our consent agenda. We're moving our library system to the committee of the whole, Haygood Mill bylaws, and a discussion on Fort Prince George. Is there anything else that needs to be added to consent agenda? All right, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand.
Get a motion in the second.
I made the motion.
Motion by Councilman Whitehurst, second by Councilman Bowers, sorry, I'm.
I so moved quietly, and he accepted quietly, and he jumped ahead, so we were more mumbling than speaking, and that's our fault.
Thank you, that's it. Again, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand, motion carries. Item number 12 is entering to executive session for these specific reasons. We need to discuss contractual issues with the courthouse for economic development, Project Pine, Project Third, and for boards and commissions for ATACS, Alcohol and Drug Behavior Health, ACOG, Assessments and Appeals, Beautification Committee, Cultural Commission, Economic Development Alliance, five district boards for Central, Crosswell, Davisville, Easley, Liberty, Pickens, Pumpkin Town, Rocky Bottom, Shady Grove, Six Mile, Library Board of Directors, Pickens County Grievance Committee, Planning Commission, Public Service Commission, Tourism Board, Zoning and Appeals, and nonprofit corporation boards for Haygood Mill, Pickens County, and Pickens County Museum. Need a motion in the second, we entered the review, it's the executive session, after a short recess, the motion is by Councilman Hendricks, second by Councilman Feenster. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries, thank you. All right, we'll call us back into regular session out of executive. We do have a couple of action items. The first is to move forward on contractual agreement with regards to the courthouse for Ask for a motion in the second on that.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Bowers, second by Councilman Feenster, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. On economic development and Project Pine, ask for a motion in second to move forward with economic development on Project Pine.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Feenster.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bowers. Any discussion?
I want to explain, I want to vote no against this for reasons that we've discussed in executive sessions, which may not be appropriate to talk about out here, but my vote is going to be no.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? It's five to one. On boards and commissions, I'm going to read the entire list, and then we'll vote on these together. So looking to appoint Catherine Castle to assessments and appeals, Chrissy James to Easley's Central Water Board, J.D. Kelly, emergency services, Randy Bowers, emergency services, Ronald Freeman, emergency services, David Hosea, Haygood Mill, Larry Waggoner, Haygood Mill, Louise Earl Hedden, Haygood Mill, Diane Mitchell, museum board, Robert Ballantyne, planning commission, William Cato, planning commission, and Charles Watson, planning commission. I need a motion that we accept all these folks in a second. Motion by Councilman Feenster.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All those against?
One abstention.
One abstention. Motion carries. I am asking now.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Bowers, second by Councilman Hendricks. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand, and we are adjourned, thank you all.